The December 12th, 2024 Des Moines City Council Meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Harris will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand up here, Abel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice through all.
Thank you. So, to all the public who are joining us tonight, welcome and thank you for attending. For those watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones from the dais. However, if you experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. That's cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. So, let the record show that all seven council members are present. And do we have any correspondence that has not been previously seen by council?
No, Mayor.
All right. So, we, for tonight, there are a couple of changes in the agenda. We've rearranged a couple of things from the packet, but all items will still be heard. And I'm asking for a little bit of patience if we have a couple down moments in the middle, if we get some of those confused. That's not "we," that would be "me." In addition, I am recommending to the council that we postpone the unfinished business item number two, which is vision, mission, values until a meeting in January. I just need three head nods, if that's okay. Looks like we do. Awesome. Thank you. So, now it's time for comments to the public. Do we have a sheet? Nobody signed up? So, before I give the opening to that, I'll just say, is there anybody who is attending tonight who intended to speak tonight and didn't realize they needed to sign up? All right. So, next up is committee chair reports, and we have one report tonight from the Finance Committee, and I'll hand that over to Chair Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much if anybody attended last week's study session, we discussed the bulk of the items. We discussed Q3 results and so forth, but we did make pledges because we definitely know that we need to find revenue sources. And we discussed adding, getting to work on a work plan in advance so we can get to work right away on the first meeting. I just don't want to repeat basically the same thing that was done two times last Thursday.
Thanks, Matt. Next up, we have a city manager to report if there is any information to report out.
No report tonight, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. Could the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, senior activity center solar panel grant acceptance. Item three, sound transit contract amendment. Item four, Water District 54 franchise amendment. Item five, Hempstead Consulting Contract Renewal Amendment Number Three. Item six, Sixth Place 287th Street Pipe Replacement Project Consultant Contract and Grant Award. Item seven, 2025 vehicle purchases. Item eight, consultant services contract for transportation element. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Netting?
I move to approve the consent calendar as read, Mayor.
I have a second. Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Thank you. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Mahoney?
I think we need to pull item four.
Okay. Any others?
Nope.
All right. With no other hands, we will be considering all items on the consent calendar except for item number four. All in favor, raise your hand. Looks like we have a 7-0 in that. Thank you. So, I will pass it off to you, Councilmember Mahoney, for item number four.
So, item four was an issue where I had a belief that there was a potential conflict of interest. The city attorney gave us a determination. I'd like him to maybe give us some reversion before we take the vote.
Yeah, I was asked that question at the last council meeting. I did write a memo. I provided it to the council. The short was, I would recommend that a council member disclose, at a minimum, a potential conflict if they have one related to agreements of this sort.
But specifically, the letter in your recommendation was that, your recommendation was recusal. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think, you know, part of that was just, you know, we've heard a lot from the community about openness and transparency. And I think in that spirit, that would be my recommendation. It's not a requirement, though, under the city code.
So, the only thing I would add, thank you, thank you, city attorney, the only thing I would add is, in that same vein, we swear on the way to the Constitution, uphold the laws, but act ethically. And in this particular case, I just think it's right that Councilmember Grace Matsui recuse herself in this particular vote. Other than that, that's all I got to say.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, and then we'll open for any further discussion. Do you have a motion? Councilmember Netting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-099, amending the franchise agreement with King County Water District 54.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney for the second. Any discussion? Okay. I'll take Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
In principle, I actually agree with Councilmember Mahoney. However, this is basically, this kind of thing really comes up to the individual feelings of the council member. We have no ability to compel. The city attorney presented the opinion, and I think you should just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I appreciate city attorney Tim George's legal opinion about the potential appearance of conflict of interest while he confirmed there was no actual conflict of interest. But in the spirit of not wanting to even have a hint of conflict of interest or an appearance of, I have decided to recuse myself from this vote. I do believe that my feelings about this have been very clear for the last eight years. I was invited to a study session in 2016 where I sat on the floor and expressed my non-support of raising taxes in a district that is 27% low-income, would include raising the fees for all of the businesses in the Marina District and for people on the fixed income at the Adriana Apartments. But I appreciate the due diligence that was put into it by the city attorney's office, and we'll be happy to go with that opinion.
Councilmember Mahoney for a second time, and then, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for his first time, and then Councilmember Mahoney. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui, I appreciate you doing that. I think the appearance is important, and it's the honorable thing. So, I really congratulate you. I want this to be a positive thing. Secondly, is that I think this is an important agreement that we're having with Water District 54, to put them on equal standing with all of the other water districts that serve Des Moines, and they should all be treated equally. There are other water districts that have a much higher percentage of low-income population, and they seem to be managing how to deal with a utility tax as well. But it is a fairness issue, I think, to be applied to everybody across the city, and therefore, I would support this franchise agreement, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, I too applaud your decision. I appreciate that. Like I said, it's something I didn't want to do, but I felt necessary to avoid these types of misunderstandings or appearances. So, I applaud you. I will say this, that had this gone in place eight years ago, as the others did, we would have had a revenue of a total of $600,000 so far based on that. And there are areas in this community that do pay this that are far more economically disadvantaged, so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or in discussion? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiker, Councilmember Netting, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris, and myself, in favor, opposed? Oh, that's right. She has recused herself. So, it's 6-0. Or do you call that, that's a 6-0, right? Okay. All right. Is it for consent? Excellent. All right. Next up is unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business, we'll be discussing the square footage tax, and we'll have a presentation. Well, the purpose of this item is for the city council to consider a warehouse tax based on square footage, and we'll have a presentation by Assistant City Attorney Matt Hutchins.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney, with the staff presentation for the second reading of draft ordinance 24-082. As I hope we all remember, on November 21st, the council was presented with draft ordinance 24-082, which would impose a square footage tax on warehouse businesses located in the city of Des Moines. As was presented them, the tax was projected to bring in between $700,000 and $800,000 in the first year in new revenue to support city services facing the budget constraints we've discussed quite a bit, including the, of course, 1% property tax. So, as presented, the draft ordinance would assess a tax on a quarterly basis based on the square footage used for the storage of merchandise, goods, materials, equipment, et cetera, in furtherance of engaging in business. Areas used for parking, loading docks, retail sales, stairs, elevator shafts, and other purposes that are not related to storage of materials, they would be excluded. And the tax is an alternative to the gross receipts tax, not an additional tax. The initial rate of the tax was proposed to be 13 cents per square foot per quarter, or 52 cents per year. Tax was proposed to increase annually based on the CPI for the Seattle area of the prior June, and businesses with under 4,000 square feet of warehouse area would not be assessed a tax. So, following that presentation, the council had a lot of questions, a lot of discussion, and asked the city manager to look into whether that tax rate was appropriate, given, among other things, the proximity of the Des Moines Business Park to Sea-Tac Airport, and also whether there were other options for adjusting the tax rate as time went on. So, after consulting with staff, city manager asked legal department to prepare an alternative draft ordinance, which would increase the initial rate to 13 and a half cents per square foot per quarter, and the CPI-based increase would instead be an annual set 3% increase. Other than those two things, not other aspects, the tax ordinance would be the same. So, on the screen, we have a pair of suggested motions to adopt the substitute draft ordinance that incorporates the city manager's changes, which is staff's recommendation. And below that, there's a suggested motion to adopt the original draft ordinance 24-082 as presented on November 21st, if that is the preference. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, my eyesight is failing me, but in the unlikely occurrence that a business, their gross receipts then surpassed, was higher than the warehouse fee, is there an automatic switch to, do you see what I'm asking? I'm sorry, but I can't.
Yes. So, if that is a possibility, the taxpayer should calculate both possible taxes, and whichever one is higher would be the one that applies.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Apologies.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I was just going to make the motion, so I was just waiting for, there didn't appear to be questions, so I was going.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Oh, I wanted to check, and I know this is our second reading. Were there other cities that were compared for rates other than just Aquila and Canton, the one that we had before? Or was that the extent of the analysis of looking at the other city rates?
We did not add any additional data to the, there were six cities overall that we found that had the tax. We sort of excluded Bellevue because it's unusually high and it applies to office space, and also Algonah because it is really, really low compared to the other ones. But, yeah, so it'd be DuPont at 15 cents, Kent, which will be at 12 starting in January, Auburn's 10 cents, and can't recall the other one, but it should be in the pack.
Any other questions before the motion? So, Councilmember Mahoney, go ahead with the motion.
I move to introduce substitute draft ordinance 24-082-B for the council consideration.
Do you have a second? Councilmember Netting, any discussion?
It's a revenue source that, thanks to Matt, we have, all credit goes to you for coming up and bringing it before the Finance Committee, that we can use for an area that we thought we'd get more taxation out of and didn't. And this is a way to get those funds, so, to help our city, and I think it's a fair and just taxation.
Any others? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0. Would you like to make the second motion, councilmember?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact draft ordinance 24-082-B imposing a square footage tax.
Do you have a second? Councilmember Netting, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0. Great. Excellent. All right. So, thank you for that. Next up, we had the mission, vision, values discussion. That was item number two, and we have postponed that. So, we're moving on to the next item. Next item is number three, an update on our SAMP response. And the purpose of this item is to consider a collaborative set of public and staff comments with regard to our SAMP process, and we're going to receive a staff presentation from Rebecca Deming. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's just a little bit background on the SAMP. Again, the proposed action on the SAMP is to implement 31 near-term projects. It includes a terminal with 19 gates, automated people mover, and three stations, as well as a bunch of other projects, 31 projects. The specific project that we're generally talking about is the NEPA process where the FAA is the lead agency. There was, I have a little map, although it's a little bit off, two spots where there were public involvement, the scoping, public meetings, and then this public comment period, which is where we're at now. And if it works, you can't see it. So, we had the scoping where we were able to comment, and then in the, right here, where we've got the meetings, and then the comment period. Background on the four-city partnership that we have, we had the ILA, which was formed in March 2018. The cities contracted with a consultant in July 2018. The cities provided scoping comments in September 2018. In January 2020, the contract with the consultant services was suspended until the NEPA or SEPA documents were released. And then in October 2024, the cities requested an extension on the comment period because it was such a short period of time for us to respond. And then we're here now, working to provide a comment letter on what was provided in the NEPA EA. So, first, we're going to talk a little bit about the four-city response that was prepared by the four cities. The topics within the four cities talks about aircraft noise, the health effects, impacts to education and learning, air quality, surface transportation, airspace and flight procedure change requests, and then next steps or moving forward. A little bit about aircraft noise, talking about that there's a 20% increase and how this has disruptions to people's conversations, learning, working, and sleeping, that high levels of noise exposure results in health impacts, sleep disturbance, and impacts to learning, that we feel that the DNL noise metrics does not adequately reflect residents' experience with aircraft noise, and that there has been an experience in growth since 2003, even though that that's not the baseline that they're using within the environmental review, and that it has not been studied. Within health effects, that there's research out there indicating that the high levels of noise exposure leads to health impacts, sleep disturbances, and the impacts, the impacts to learning and education, that we have nine schools within the highest level of noise impacts. And within these 31 projects, that that's going to increase from nine to 12, which is a lot. Federal regulations are characterizing that this level of noise is not compatible with noise-sensitive development, which sensitive development includes schools, and that the health and well-being of our communities, as well as our children's education, should be considered by the port. And of course, they're still determining that this is not considered per the federal guidelines, an increase in enough noise to trigger a major increase. Again, air quality, we know that with all of this increases critical air pollutants, how that we believe it impacts our residents, particularly vulnerable populations, especially those with asthma and other respiratory conditions, and the elderly. We believe that there'll be surface transportation and congestion. They have, within the surface transportation and congestion, there is proposals for mitigation in the sense that there'll be, there's a forecast to reach 63 million annually. But by 2023, 20% increase in passengers will mean a significant increase in vehicular traffic and local roads, both arriving and departing passengers, as well as increase in support services. An additional impact for communities, including roadway congestion, which also increases air pollution and noise. Airspace and flight procedure changes, the airspace and flight procedure patterns will likely change to accommodate, will change to accommodate the increased operations in existing airspace. The procedure changes will reduce aircraft noise impacts, to reduce aircraft noise impacts should be thoroughly explored. We referenced back to request some original recommendations that were made as part of the scoping letter, and so we referenced back to that, and made note that sustainable growth requires adequate and effective mitigation to offset and reduce impacts, which should be identified and prioritized in collaboration with the communities surrounding the airport. Moving forward, a big next step related to noise is the Part 150 stuff that the port has to do, and we've asked them to review the noise contours and the changes, and to really incorporate that in that process, review their findings, and work with the communities, remove silos, and work with us for possible impacts and mitigation associated with the Part 150. We also very much asked to give us proper comment periods when they move into the SEPA process. We also had the Our City Community Response Letter. In this one, we talked about what we did here as a city. We had a community meeting. We talked about, again, not having enough time for our community to respond in the comment period. We referenced back to the impacts, talked about the third runway, alternative airports, flight procedure changes, SEPA, and the recent ruling at the D.C. Court of Appeals. So, again, we gave background on the community meeting we held, how many people came out, which is quite a bit for the size of our community, letters that aim to capture and communicate the concerns that we've heard, both here, me being even out at the public meetings that they held, people came up to me and talked about their concerns, time allotted at the comment period, how it just seems like they just want to check a box. They're not really wanting to hear from the community. They're just trying to do their due diligence and say, hey, we gave you the minimum comment period, so let's move on. We gave a summary, a little bit of a summary of the technical comments that were based out of the four-city letters, covered noise, all the same things, health, education, learning, air quality. We didn't want to miss it in the community letter. Talked about the third runway, even though it was outside of the scope of the environmental assessment, since it wasn't part of the 31 projects, but wanted to make note that it does increase overflights here, and that our residents have expressed concerns with this increase, and talked about maybe there's a possible preferential runway use program or nighttime runway use program that could limit growth and impact on our residents. Again, airspace and flight procedure patterns will likely change to accommodate the increased operations in existing airspace, and maybe there's procedure or noise abatement changes that should be explored to protect those impacts, to prevent those impacts. And then discussions on and studying any expansion and And then discussions on, and studying any expansion and capacity in commercial service at other airports, because that's really the only way to relieve future increases here. And that the only sustainable approach to meeting demand in the future and through 32, 2032 and beyond, will be to leverage other facilities or to build another airport to provide additional capacity for commercial aviation. And again, can we please have more time for SEPA process? Because there's only, there's not enough time for us to really delve in and really analyze their studies. When you get noise studies, I mean, we can read theirs and say, this, theirs says this, but we can't really critique their studies. No one, no one can have time to do a whole new noise study. There's just not enough time and the time provided to, to analyze any of it. And we put a paragraph in there that says, in light of the recent ruling by the D.C. Court of Appeals, which invalidated the authority of the CEQ to issue binding regulations under NEPA, and because the FAA relies on the CEQ baseline for their environmental analysis related to the SAMP, we're basically asking them to not move any further until a further action that clarifies what the proper environmental assessment is related to SAMP. Again, we don't know that they'll listen to us, but we wanted to put it at least in writing. What's next? They're going to review and respond to all of the comments. And then if someone can convince them that there are significant impacts, then they'll provide an EIS. We don't believe, and our consultant has told us, they don't believe that there's enough in there that would trigger an EIS. So our guess is they'll just publish a final EA under NEPA. However, the next process is the SEPA process. And the Port of Seattle has previously committed to releasing a SEPA EIS. They did publish in 2018 a notice of significance stating that they would do a SEPA EIS. So we would, we would be expecting a SEPA EIS, even if we're not expecting a NEPA EIS. So based on previous documents published, that would be the next step after NEPA. We'll continue to participate in their Stakeholder Advisory Roundtables or START, and the Part 150 Noise Compatibility Plan and Technical Review Committees to try and make sure that we're doing everything we can to help our residents.
This is the next item. Yeah, it is the next item. So did you want to?
Yeah, you might need to call up, I think, item four, so that we can have a discussion about both of them.
Oh, I see. You want to, you want to take them together?
That's what we were recommending. That's why we put them together.
Oh, I see. Okay, go ahead then. Just continue on to item number four. So just for introduction purposes, the next item is the ILA for SAMP review. ILA stands for inter-local agreement. We've got an agreement between, well, that'll be part of the presentation. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider the approval of an ILA with regard to SAMP contractors. And so go ahead and continue, Rebecca.
Thank you. So the original ILA was signed in 2018, and the purpose of the ILA was to, was a process for review and analysis and responding to the environmental process related to the SAMP, including the SEPA and NEPA processes. It was about the partnership between the cities, not necessarily about the specific consultant or the scope of work. It establishes a process for selection and funding of the consultants. Established, established which city would do contract management and which city would do the fiscal management. The duration of the original ILA was through December 31, 2020. There was an amendment approved in March 2020 that changed the contract management to the City of Des Moines. The new ILA that's proposed today includes the change from the original ILA, which includes the contract management with the City of Des Moines, which was the same as the amendment as mentioned, and a duration that includes completion through the SAMP, which is currently estimated through December 31, 2027, within the ILA. The council has options. The ILA has been approved by the other cities as proposed in the packet. The options are listed as approve the ILA as proposed, deny the ILA, which still leaves us with the issue of needing to pay the consultant for the work completed, as the consultant still has a valid contract, approve the ILA, pay the consultant, and then withdraw if the City of Des Moines does, no longer wishes to work with the other cities on this effort through the SEPA process. Direct staff to prepare an alternative agreement that is very narrow, just relates to the payment of the consultant by the four cities using the joint funds. And the new draft agreement must be recirculated and approved by the other three cities. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I guess I'll, since they put the items together, I'm going to open it for questions on either one of those two items. So, any questions? Councilmember Mahoney.
First of all, Rebecca, thank you. You've done strong work in a short time. I really appreciated you taking the lead on this and, and city staff and city manager and the interim have chosen somebody wisely. I thought, I'm specifically, particularly speaking to the Des Moines resident letter that you guys summation. And it's well crafted. I mean.
Do you have a question?
Oh, my question is, is that on the end of it, shouldn't we put, instead of sincerely in your name, put on behalf of our residents and have the city manager and the mayor sign? It's just a little bit more weighty. No disrespect intended.
We're open to whatever option you guys would like.
Any other comments or questions? I agree with that. I would like there to be some kind of a representation in the letter that's, that looks like a council touch to it, that council has touched it. But I don't know if we need a separate motion for that, or if we can do that by a head nod. I suppose that's a question for the city attorney. Do we need to make a motion in order to change? Or are they all going to have to?
Do a head nod if you want.
Okay. Yep, got that. All right. Good. Any other question, Councilmember?
No, thank, thank you, Mayor.
All right, and. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and then take a motion. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the ILA inter-local agreement between the cities of Bierian, Des Moines, Normity Park, and Sea-Tac for the environmental review of the Sea-Tac Airport Sustainable, I'm sorry, Sea-Tac Airport Sustainable Airport Master Plan. I think there's an extra word in there. The SAMP, and to direct city manager to execute the ILA sustainably in the form as attached.
Have a second? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz saw his hand before his voice. So that's for the second. Okay, any discussion? Councilmember Harris?
I will struggle to support this without some kind of support from the council that we will visit, I guess bullet point number three, approve the ILA, pay the consultant, and then consider a new agreement. I completely understand that it is like pulling teeth, asking staff to revisit an administrative issue like this amongst the four cities. But this, I find the letter and their work product completely unsatisfactory in so many ways. And I am deeply frustrated that we have not visited this issue earlier on because although the SAMP, you know, there's a 45-day comment period. The fact is, we have known for a year that this was coming, and we had plenty of time to examine and come to a decision. And I just want to show my appreciation for Ms. Demming and Ms. Caffrey being thrown into the deep end on such a hyper-technical issue. Yeah. So my strongest wish would be that we, as I've said, please pay the consultants for their work. It is fine in about three of the 13 resource categories in the draft EA. And then, please, the council should take a look at another agreement as early as possible in 2025. So, yeah, I, I, I don't even know how to put that in the form of an amendment. I'm, I'm just struggling to, you know, I guess I'll have to vote yes, but. So I would ask, I would ask the city attorney, is there an amendment where I can, can I, can I get an agreement from the mayor, the city manager, to put that notion on the table sometime early in 2025?
Yes, so I do want to answer that, Councilmember. I was going to give an introduction for item number four when we got to that, so let me give you that. I think everybody was emailed a summary, so I'll restate it. We have scheduled a study session for February 6. And in that, the main focus of that study session, so that's the first week in February, is the creation of an airport committee with parameters for members and a scope of work that includes handling tasks and collaboration with other partners. Second item and focus of that meeting is a discussion of the pros and cons of this ILA, of our consultants, and seeking other options if we wish. The third point of that discussion will be a discussion of responsibilities of this ILA, should we decide to keep it, and assign any needed resolution tasks to the committee. So this, every aspect of concern in regard to this and how we're proceeding forward with the SAMP and the airport committee, which we, I think Councilmember Mahoney really stressed, and we, we agreed that we would form that committee Q1. So that's all planned for February 6. And that's our word. We've already put it on, I don't know if it's on the, online on the futures yet, but. Yep, so, Councilmember Harris.
I just want to, yeah, I am not a big fan of the airport committee concept, just independent. But I just want to stress again how much I appreciate you being thrown into the deep end. Just, I've been at this eight years, okay? And, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Any other, with, with this in mind, especially the intro that I brought forward, any other discussion items? Okay, I, you raising your hand? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I would echo a lot of what Councilmember Harris said, is that I think you've done an amazing job getting thrown into the deep end, so congratulations. I think you're doing, doing fine. As, as, you know, Councilmember Harris pointed out, you know, we've known for a year that this was coming, and now there's a concern about the consultant. I'm not quite sure where that's coming from and why that wasn't brought up a lot earlier. But we are going to be able to address that, you know, for a more formal setting. You know, so I hope that that will, you know, we'll have a much better understanding of what those concerns might be at this point. In terms of both the letter from the four cities, which the other three cities, I understand, have approved, it's basically accept what's there or vote against it. And I don't even know that we're going to vote on that tonight because, you know, that was part of what we contracted for. Additionally, and I read it, and I think it's, it's well-riddled and, and quite pointed. In terms of the other letter from the community, I think it's done a good job of writing in much less technical prose to express a lot of what we've heard at our meeting here and what we've gotten from that. So I think both of those were well-done, and I just want to give compliments to our consultants for having, for pulling that together, as well as to Ms. Demming. And then lastly, for the local, inter-local agreement, you know, we're working with three other cities in this, and we need to be able to administratively keep up our end. We can approve this at this point, and if we have a reason to change it later, there's a 30-day opt-out for any one of the cities, I believe. And so we have the ability to address that during the pendency of the contract. So even though it said 2027, I think was the extended date, the reality is that if we have the conversation and we decide to do something different at any point between now and then, we certainly can. So I will support the ILA extension at this point, and I think both letters are excellent. Thank you.
Also, like, sorry, just a clarifying comment, based off what the deputy mayor said. Again, the ILA is really about the relationship between the cities, and so that's a fair discussion for the council to have, how you want that relationship to continue to be. But as Rebecca said, as it relates to the actual consultant, that's a totally separate agreement, that we can cancel at any time. We'd have to cooperate with the other cities on that, but also at this point, there's no additional work for this consultant. So it's a perfect time to have that conversation that Councilmember Harris asked about, and sort of, what's the strategy moving forward?
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So I will just add, kudos again, very impressed. You know, some of the response I got when I was asking around through this process, it's like, well, you've had four years, or however, no, longer than that. You know, the SAMP has been ready for this step for a long time. So to continually be on the edge of our seat, ready with every, all the data that we needed, it's almost like the longer it goes, the more we just say, this is never going to happen. In fact, this last year, I think we were notified two or even three times that the SAMP was coming out, and then it didn't. And so, so to criticize us for not being ready, I think is, it was a little bit like, you know, the little boy who cried wolf, right? And so, so then having all the other issues that we were dealing with, the budget and unexpected hurdles during that, and staff transition, huge celebration for just getting this far. And pulling the community together at the last minute to gather this for their sake, you know, pulling a special meeting together, very difficult to do. Thank you. I particularly impressed with the, and the one letter about the Court of Appeals information. So I thought that was, that is one of the most effective incorporations in the letter, so thank you. I'm happy with this. I will be voting in favor. Any other comments or questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Ochsker, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Motzwee, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed, so it's six one. Okay. And that's done, and that's done. All right, next up, we're moving into one of our public hearings. Oh, it's, well, I was supposed to introduce that at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll introduce it now. So we have two public hearings tonight, and each of them will allow for some public comment. I'll bring that forward later. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider a set of budget amendments for year 2024. I will now open the public meeting. And we'll begin with a staff presentation by Finance Director Jeff Friend.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Finance Director Jeff Friend, we are going to have a presentation. Now, on the 2024 budget amendments, we did this last meeting. We have a few more to include before the year concludes. There's really three main budget amendments in the packet. The first is regarding unspent funds in capital projects, namely the police improvements and court improvements. Those projects closed. There was unspent general fund money in those projects in our system. When we close a project and there happens to be unspent money, system transfers it back to where it came from. So this is really just capturing that transaction that has occurred in September in the budget, so that we can show that we've budgeted for that retroactively. So that's the $255,000. Second item is really just housekeeping. We're just increasing transfers in accounts in various funds so that citywide, the transfers in will match the transfers out in the budget. So if you transfer $5 out of one place and receive it in another, you know, that's $5 on each side. Really just making the budget pretty. Because we, those funds would still receive the revenue anyway, that's not a problem, but we just want to have it look good in the budget. But the last one is probably the one, probably earning the most discussion, which is redirecting American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to the Marina Steps project. So there's about $1.3 million allocated to that project from the ARPA grant. And those funds need to be obligated or put in contract by the end of this year, or those funds. or those funds would be lost and returned to the federal government. The project went out to bid, and as you'll hear later, the bids came in higher than Public Works feels we can afford, and finance would agree. So that puts these funds in jeopardy as there's a clock ticking on them, as far as getting them obligated, because we won't be able to get them obligated for this project, most likely. So we would recommend redirecting those funds to the general fund. As we detailed in our last meeting, the general fund has some pretty dire cash balance needs. It would help with that, and then $80,000 would help fund the replacement of the roof on the senior center. So that's what the $1.3 million would be redirected to cover. And again, the alternative would be that those funds would be sent back to the federal government. And that brings us to the suggested motion.
Thank you. So it is now time for public comment portion of the public hearing. Please keep your comments respectful and understand that anyone speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be removed from the meeting. Please state your name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to speak if you come to the podium. So is there anyone, we don't have anybody who's signed up, I don't think so, right? So is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak, who wishes to speak? Second call, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak but who wishes to speak? Third call, anyone who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? All right. So now it's time for council questions. Council, do you have any questions, please, questions only at this time? Council member Mahoney.
So the only question I have does, has to do with the Marina Fund money, understanding I'm realistic here. What, and it may come in a future conversation, but what is our plans to recoup those funds? And obviously, we made the additional funds for the Marina Development Fund, for the steps and so forth.
So, just so I understand the question, so for the Marina Steps, what is the plan to recoup funding for that project?
Yes, we have, these 1.3 million are roughly thereabouts, right? And that was part of a group of different funds that we're paying for this.
Yeah, I think Mike Levin, during his presentation later in the meeting, might expand on that a bit more, but I would think that the one option is to rebid the project, see where that comes in, if it comes in lower, because more people bid, or more contractors bid. Either way, there's no ARPA money that would be available to be put into the project. You could move bond money that we issued in the 2023 bonds. That bond funding can be moved between bond projects. So if that is what council is interested in doing, then that would be possible. But that would be the first few things I would, would think of in response to your question.
Thank you.
And also just, this will be later in the meeting too, but we have scheduled a discussion on the agenda for January 9th to discuss this options moving forward.
Yes, correct. My point was that we're tossing, we're putting this money into another account, and whether, I know those conversations, maybe the cart before the horse, but my question had to do with, do we have at least some ideas? And unfortunately, I know we're going to hear those, and in good faith, you know, you're asking us in good faith, but, but I just want to make that prominent in the question.
Okay. I saw a couple hands raised, deputy mayor Steinmetz, and then council member Harris, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Friend. If we don't transfer the ARPA funds, the 1.3, to the general fund and obligate them as indicated here, we end up writing a check to Uncle Sam, right? Just, just give them the money back.
That's correct. We do an annual report every April, April to the federal government, and we would have to report that those funds were unobligated, and then they would take those funds back.
And do we even have the funding available to pay them back?
Well, yes, the 1.3 million would be in the ARPA fund, and so we have it, and we would send it back, and it wouldn't affect the general fund's balances. But we also have the opportunity cost of not being able to use it for the benefit of the city.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions before the motion? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Council member Nunning.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-104, amending the 2024 annual budget adopted in ordinance number 1779.
I have a second, deputy mayor Steinmetz for the second discussion. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, looks like it's 7-0. So before moving to our second public hearing, we will now be considering a new business item. Business item number one, suspension of one-time revenue for 2025 to 2026. The purpose of this item is to consider suspending the restriction on the use of one-time revenue, and this will be a presentation by finance director Jeff Friend.
Thank you, mayor. This presentation, we're going to talk about a budget-related topic that usually comes out quite frequently in discussions of the budget and the city's finances. I'm going to look at a little bit at the history of the one-time revenue, where it came from, how the city's been doing with it, and then steps moving forward. And to also want to mention that this is in the proposed budget for 2025, 2026. So the Des Moines Municipal Code, and this section of the code is based on an ordinance, ordinance number 1561 that was adopted in 2012. So when we talk about one-time revenue, the city's code defines that as all corresponding sales tax and business and occupation tax revenues received by the city from development projects with a total value exceeding $15 million. Then it goes on to say, "All revenues designated as one-time revenues, which are restricted from being used to fund the general fund budget, shall be transferred to the municipal capital improvements fund to be used for projects consistent with the purposes of that fund." So essentially, this is what's happening. So there's a development project in the city, it's valued over $15 million. And those construction companies that are doing that project, you know, there's transactions related to that project, and they pay sales tax, and they pay business occupation tax. And in finance, we look at those records, we know what projects, what companies they are, we separate that out. So that goes into the general fund, they, those projects create sales tax and BNO tax that we designate as one-time. That goes into the general fund, and then from the general fund, according to the code, would leave the general fund and go into the capital projects fund. So the general fund is essentially, for this money, kind of a pass-through, it comes in, and then it goes out. Yeah, that button's ticking. So historically, as I mentioned, that ordinance was adopted in 2012. This is the history of the transactions, or at least of the one-time revenue since then. The years of 2014, 2015, and 2016 have asterisks, because in the ordinance, it establishes that a certain amount would be retained in the general fund, which is on the side table there. So retention in the general fund in 2014, they, they won't retain, retain, the city wouldn't retain more than 75% of that money. In 2015, they wouldn't retain 50%, and in 2016, they wouldn't, the city wouldn't retain more than 25%. So essentially, it eases the city in to the practice of transferring all of these monies into the capital projects fund. So therefore, when you look at 2016, that's why only 500,000 was transferred, though they had earned, the city had earned 593,000. So looking at the large table, that shows the amount of sales tax, one-time sales tax earned by the city, the amount of BNO tax in the next column that the city earned, and then the total one-time revenue. The column on the end shows how much of that revenue was transferred out of the general fund. So notice in 2014 and 2015, they weren't, despite the retention restriction, no funds were transferred at that time. At that time, that is when the city was struggling with bankruptcy issues. But then you see in 2016 through 2019, the transfers were made up until 2020. And if you remember, 2020 wasn't a great year. That is when the pandemic hit, and so it makes sense that the transfer would be retained with council approval that year. 2021 and 2022, those transfers resumed. But then 2023 and 2024, I like to consider kind of a mix of the prior issues, solvency and pandemic inflation. And so council approved retaining those one-time funds in the general fund in 2023 and 2024. Overall, since the original ordinance was adopted, the city has transferred nearly $4 million from the general fund into the capital projects fund, and that's about 70% of all the funds that were available. When the one-time tax leaves the general fund, it is received by Fund 309, which is a capital projects fund, that is the one-time tax fund. So on the one-time tax fund currently, that fund has a balance of $1.3 million. In the budget, it has scheduled debt service of $50,000 a year, so $50,000 for 2024, and then 2025 and 2026. And that's a part of the payment for the 2023 municipal bonds that were issued last year. As far as projects being funded out of this fund with the one-time tax money, in the capital improvements plan that was adopted in, earlier this year, there'd be about $115,000 is planned for use in capital projects. So if everything went according to plan, the ending cash at the end of 2026 would be $1 million, which is about 300,000 less than the current balance. So in the biennial budget, what we had proposed is, we have a conservative estimate of about $275,000 a year in each of 2025 and 2026 that would be coming into the general fund. And due to the budget deficit that we were confronting, we had proposed that this, these funds would be retained. Retaining these one-time funds was first introduced with the list of options that we had for dealing with the budget deficit, which we initially brought to council in a discussion session on September 5th. So also related to that amount and why it's much higher than we expect the actuals to be for this year is because there's a number of projects that are in the pipeline. Doesn't mean that they're all going to happen, they have, go through a process handled by community development, but the five anticipated projects would be Wesley Homes Phase 2, Des Moines Creek Business Park West, Highline Place 2, renovation of Pacific Middle School, and Woodmont Beach Mixed Use, which is apartment buildings near the Safeway in, by Redondo, or north of Redondo. Okay, moving forward, so this, this issue is, is one of the ones that does get brought up by the community, especially when we discuss ballot measures that we've put on the ballot. And the reason for that is, from my perspective, is there's, there's two city priorities that are competing. One would be solvency of the general fund, and the other would be funding capital projects with one-time money. So and the reason that we kept it in the budget the way it is, is from our perspective, we placed a higher priority on the solvency of the general fund. But moving forward, we do think it's an issue that needs to be addressed and discussed and revisited, all of those things. It's an old ordinance, it's an ordinance from 2012, and so there's different questions that you can have about it, you know, 14 years later. So our plan is to bring this as an agenda item to the finance committee in the first finance committee of next year. We plan to review that ordinance with the finance committee and discuss all the issues surrounding the one-time revenue and its role in the city's finances, and then, you know, ultimately get guidance from the committee and possibly later from the council. And that brings us to our suggested motion. And any questions?
Any questions before the motion, deputy mayor Steinmetz?
I'm just trying to see if I kind of understand this, which is, while we call it one-time money, it's because it's coming from one source one time. But if I read your chart correctly, there is constant amount, or, you know, there are always funds coming in, in these projects that are over 15 million. And so it's not in that sense, one-time money that won't be there next year. There will be some money there next year, depending upon the number of $15 million projects that occur. As you've indicated, there are several that are in the pipeline. And so that definition of one-time money doesn't really seem to be correct, because it's, it is an ongoing source. It's just, it, it feels to me it's a little difficult to predict, and I'd like you to comment on that. But is that essentially true? What I'm saying is that it's not classic one-time money that won't be there next year, there will be some money there next year.
Yeah, I think that's correct, and I think that is one of the questions that we need to talk to the finance committee about, because, for example, the sale of the street portion to the port is part of the business part. That, that seems like one-time money, that's one sale, and then we get like 690,000 one time. It's not happening again. But as you point out, projects in the city are always happening. We've, you know, we've gotten money every single year, which seems to be the definition of recurring, which would mean structural, but it's also volatile. So, I mean, it's up some years, you know, as you saw on the chart, and then like this year is down. So I think that that's something for the council to consider, if they want to consider that one time or not.
The, the amount is hard to predict, but you mentioned volatility.
Yeah. Yeah. Because projects, well, for example, the last couple of years, we've had two main projects. That brought in a good sum. Those, both those projects wound down this year. So the amount that's coming in this year, if I was to put it on the chart, I don't remember if I did, is quite a bit less. And so it's hard to predict those cycles. But with five projects, we should be okay, I think, in the next couple of years.
If I could just add something onto that, as somebody new to the organization, I'd frankly never seen an ordinance like this before. In my experience, revenues like this were always considered variable recurring revenues, to your, your point. So that's why I think Jeff and I are really interested in sort of exploring this again, because I think one-time is actually a misleading term. That being said, because it is variable, it's really important, we're conservative in our estimates, so that we're not caught short. But that's why we're really interested in sort of taking a fresh look at the whole ordinance next year.
And that's why such a small portion of the bond payment and such a small amount of money is going from that cap, one tax, time tax fund into the projects, because it does, I mean, it's hard to plan on it necessarily, so.
Any other questions before the motion? Do I have a motion? I saw council member Mahoney's hand, but if not, I'm going to take it. Council member Nunning.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-088, amending DMMC 3.10.020 and lifting the restriction on the use of one-time revenue in the general fund budget for the years 2025 and 2026.
I have a second, council member Mahoney, thank you, discussion. Council member Harris?
You know, if you've been in bad relationships, you've had the bad boyfriend and so forth, you get into something new, and there's a tendency to like overreact or just not, you know, be a little, once you hear something. So I never want any of our newer employees to, but you need to understand that my skepticism about all of this stuff comes from decades of not great management practices. I do not consider construction to be recurring revenue, because it is so variable. And, in fact, I wouldn't even put it in the same category as general sales tax. My experience with Des Moines- My experience with Des Moines is that, you know, utilities, property taxes, restaurant money, retail, you know, are somewhat stable over time, but construction projects come and go. And and to depend on them for a baseline of your budget, it's just like, okay. So it's just hasn't been my experience that the cranes are consistent over time. It is an important discussion to have, and but I just, I think there was great merit to the original notion of the ordinance. It's just that it was completely aspirational. It was never possible, because we never generated enough revenue of other types to pay the bills. So we kept basically overriding it because, you know, to reflect the reality that we are dependent upon construction, whether it's there or not, and that variability has been, that lack of predictability has been to the detriment of city planning. And I will thank you, Mr. Friend, for this very excellent presentation, and stop there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? But Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, in in my conversation with the city manager discussing this, this is where we both said we need to relook at this as far as how one time money or what I like now is the variable occurring monies. I like that definition much better. You know, this is an unusual time where we've had inflation, you've seen where our costs are up twenty five percent and our revenues in the low single digits. It's our property taxes are capped, and we lack the big box stores or the car dealerships or the high end items where we're there, a lot of other cities are designed to get revenues, or they got hotels or other things. And Councilmember Harris is right. We've always been capped or limited by those kind of things, and we've had to use this money. It's one time money. It's meant for, I think it was lofty in what it was meant for, and I think, obviously, twelve years later, there's a good look at it. I will be supporting this because of where we are today. I think it's a realistic and reasonable ask regarding our current financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the city manager's comments about never having seen this before. It's kind of an artificial, my understanding of it is it's kind of an artificial stop on us, pay attention, you know, to to how we're financing things. Don't, I believe the 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 term in gambling is don't bet on the come. And so I think it has, we've got the, we've got the the ordinance in place. We've had it for a couple of years now. We've been ignoring it or not ignoring it, but overriding it, that sort of thing. I'm going to vote no, simply because I think we've got to have, we've got to have the discipline, the discipline. And I appreciate, you know, the current fiscal situation, and I am greatly appreciative for the work that the city manager has done to bring this budget into some semblance of not having to use these funds. But at some, and I think the the problem is that the public is sitting there going, why do you keep doing this? And I think that was reflected in the Prop one collection results. So I guess I'm going to, you know, side with the public on this one and say no to using those funds. Thank you.
I'll go with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, and the reason I asked the question I did earlier, is that it's very clear to me that this is a variable reoccurring source of revenue. It is not one time money. It is misdefined and somehow got caught up in this ordinance, what we're talking about. And and that's unfortunate, because it does create things like confusion in the public because they hear one time money. And why are we spending it? Well, because there's going to be some there next year, so we can predict that there will be some there next year, but we have to make a very conservative prediction. And that's what I see here, based upon the data that you presented with us, that we can count on some, but we shouldn't count on a lot. And I think that's a fair approach. I hope we do address this in the finance committee next year and sort of straighten out the labels on things, because, you know, words, as we've heard from many up here, words matter. And the public doesn't have the time to dig into a lot of this, but they hear one time revenue, and they want to say, well, why would you do that in the budget? And that we're not. This is reoccurring revenue. It's just variable. And there are more stable forms of revenue, and there are highly variable ones. And when you add all of those up, you can come up with a pretty good prediction of what is going to be available in order to fund the city next year and the year after. And that's the exercise that we're doing here. So I would, I'm going to vote yes. I would urge everybody up here to take a look at what do they want to do with this particular budget for the next few years? Because this is a source of revenue that we can take a look at and make a conservative estimate and budget accordingly on that. And I think that's what this amendment would do. So I'd urge everybody to vote yes.
Councilmember Mahoney and then Councilmember Harris.
You know, I listened to Councilmember Oxiger. I had a couple of comments, and I understand the public wonders some things, but on the other side, there's an expectation the public has that's quite frankly unreasonable, particularly, as I mentioned, the inflation, the additional raise and rise in costs and so forth, and the fact that we're capped in other revenue sources. It's it's where you come down to, do you do this or do you cut something? Do we just cut flat out parks and recreation altogether? And then that makes it that easy? But then, when people have the expectation that those things and those services are gone? I mean, this is the thing. These are the, this is what we've come down to. This is why I'm supporting this one time money change. It's because the alternatives aren't there. Yes, we're working on solutions, but being unrealistic about where we are and and not admitting that there's been super inflation over the last few years is is a crime and an injustice to what's really going on here. So doing these things, this is one time money, and sometimes you have to make hard choices. None of us like it, but it's needed at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Motsui. I think this is Councilmember Harris' third time, so is it our second time for this one? Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciated hearing the alternative views about what we could be calling this and our aspirational goals and how we could perhaps work with that in the future to come up with something that's more realistic. I do want to recognize Jeff's example that when you have a one time event like the sale of a property, it's done. It doesn't reoccur. But you might have a sale of another property the next year. So it's not a reoccurring revenue source. You have to go out and find and hope that someone else is going to be building, renovating, and getting a project that's more than fifteen million dollars. And I think you can see just within the last only eleven years that the amount of revenue has fluctuated between seventeen thousand dollars and a million dollars. And so we have to be extremely conservative, because I don't think that we can count on an extended amount of revenue coming in this door in the future. We've already had to cancel capital projects because of soaring costs. Will that impact these projects that we have on this list that we hope may not be impacted? But we don't know. I think there's going to be a lot of volatility as we look at changes in construction materials, imports and export exports in the next year. So I think it's a, it's a good time to think about whether or not the restricted part of this funding is still serving us well. But I think one of the reasons why it is restricted is because it's so volatile, you can't count on it. And so we should be very careful to rely on this as a quote unquote recurring. It's not recurring. It's a new project gets money here, a new project gets money here, but when those bottom out, like they did in two thousand twenty and two thousand thirteen, there is none.
I'm making one here. Okay, Councilmember Harris.
You know, I was going to vote yes on this in that, you know, new relationship kind of thing, but I'm going with Councilmember Oxiger. I'm going to vote no after hearing this. Because I, this is a new, it's an old joke, but it's new to you. One of our former finance directors, they had this sort of little celebration for her her last day, and for some reason, a council member asked, you know, well, what do you think going forward? And she said, you know, I've noticed that we have this black swan event here every five to seven years. And going forward, maybe we should start budgeting like it. I don't know what it is. It could be two thousand and one, could be the Great Recession, could be two thousand and thirteen, could be COVID. There's, as Emily Littella would say, there's always something, and we should start budgeting like it and and stop saying this time will be different, you know, well, COVID and inflation and who knew? It'll be something five to seven years from now. And to think otherwise is like somebody who says, well, this is just the last payday loan I'm ever going to get, and then I'm gonna, you know, start. And just the notion of being so reliant on construction money has distracted us from actually making the real. It's it is what has kept us from developing a sound financial economic development policy is that notion of building something which is definitionally one time. It has moved us away from the productive discussion, okay? Because there's, there's always the big project. And if you're constantly focusing on that, again, I'm just going to close, construction money shouldn't even be in the same category as sales tax. It psychologically moves everyone to thinking that it is something stable, and it not only isn't it, it shouldn't be. Thank you.
More comments? Okay. So I, as a little segue from some of the the conversation that has happened tonight, I've never been given a total explanation of why it was fifteen million in two thousand and twelve. But my guess, I was educated guess, is that they knew that that is the amount that they could get by with and and could be expected, and that anything over that historically, they could, that was the cream. So in other words, what they indirectly said was fifteen million was sustainable and expected every year. That's the part, because they needed to be able to budget it. So the only reason that that the fluff is above fifteen million is because they knew they expected they could always get fifteen million. So in my opinion, that fifteen million is sustainable. So but here's the problem with the ordinance that they didn't do, and it's what our state has done with our tax cap. It's what a lot of people neglect to do is build in inflation. So that fifteen million in two thousand and twelve that this city depended on was worth a lot less than it's worth right now. And that's why if we keep, if we kept this without touching it, fifteen million, it's going to be worth less and less and less, and we're always going to need to get more and more and more. The cap, it's a, it's like we we put a cap on this. It should have, this ordinance should have at least, if you wanted to do it, included some kind of connection to CPI for its base. And so I think that it was a good, sustainable decision. Have we ever gone under that? No. And and so just to, and I'm, I'm hoping to maybe fudge your minds even a little bit if you were able to change your mind from one comment earlier. I feel like, I don't think there is any city that doesn't use this kind of money for its budget. And so if you could budget without it, there would be cities that tried, that that decided not to use this. But everybody does. Everybody takes this tax in building and uses it. So yes, you you should be able to, unless we, I mean, over the last twelve years, we've always gotten that base. So that's why I just think it was a poor foresight and poorly written code. And so I I don't think it's necessarily bad. I think it needs to be revisited. Maybe we decide to do it, maybe we don't. I think it should be tied to CPI if we do. And so I, because I'm also uncomfortable continually voting to suspend anything, it's if we always have to vote to suspend it, it's bad, bad code. So I don't see a viable alternative tonight. The finance committee and council will be tasked with a review of this practice in at least two significant discussions coming up in Q one. So I feel good about that. I feel like, okay, we're going to face this head on, and I'm looking forward to a different option moving forward. But for now, I'm going to be voting in favor. So all, it looks like discussions are done for now. All in favor, raise your right hand. So in favor, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Motsui, and Councilmember Harris. It passes four three. So now we're going to move to our second public hearing before returning to the remaining new business. So this is public hearing, item number two, the biennial budget. The purpose of this item is to hold a second reading of the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six biennial budget for council consideration approval. I will now open the public hearing. We will begin with a presentation from Finance Director Jeff Friend.
Okay. The twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budget. It's been a long year.
Oh, that's good.
So facing this budget, which we knew was going to be challenging last year as we were completing the twenty twenty four annual budget, and that was a correct instinct to have, we are facing budget challenges for the biennial, the next, you know, budget. And it's pretty consistent budget challenges. General fund sustainability, aligning expenditures and revenue. So those challenges, of course, which has been foremost in public discussion this year, is that our revenue is growing at a slower pace than our expenditures are, and largely due to inflation post COVID. Other challenges, we're aligning one time revenue with one time expenditures. Part of that discussion that we've had this year in the community is the city's reliance on what I'll say historically have termed one time for structural expenditures. Also, another challenge is restoring funding to areas that were underfunded during the pandemic. So during the pandemic, when it hit and, you know, revenue was impacted, one of the practices was not to fully fund vehicle replacement. And then lastly, finding efficiencies and cost savings in day to day operations, again, lowering costs in an effort to align expenditures and revenue in the general fund. So strategies, these are really the highlights of all the things we've seen for the last three months. So new revenue included in this budget is the warehouse square footage tax that was adopted earlier this evening, an increase to business license fees. An increase to business license fees, franchise fee agreement with Water District 54. Also, the redirection of franchise fees from arterial streets to the general fund. Those fees for the arterial streets fund are being replaced by funding from the Redondo speed enforcement cameras. Also, part of the budget process this year has been a citywide review of fee schedules, so those have been updated. And then also, new services in the city clerk's office for passport services and notary services. So if you need any of those services, please stop by City Clerk next year. On the other side of raising revenue is cost reductions. I think the main helpful reduction was the restructure of recreation, senior services and events and facility rentals, consolidating those departments and ending the contract. The contract with Wesley Homes for senior services was ended earlier this year. A number of reductions are in this budget. A number of staff positions have been reduced. The animal control contract with Burean Cares in the budget is being reduced from $100,000 to $20,000 for base services. Human services funding is being reduced from $250,000 down to $150,000. And then just department budgets for services, supplies, travel and training. Think the public refers to that as scrubbing the budget. That was scrubbed. And then also, cost of living increase was budgeted at less than the CPI that usually guides the city. So that was 3.8% and the call was budgeted at 3%. So what the proposed budget does. So the first section, structural versus one-time, which of course we just had a discussion of. It solves the structural deficit, which was, in the 2024 budget, was $1.6 million. In the current budget, just going off the top of my head, 2025 structural, we are actually in the black, $14,000. And in 2026, the deficit's only $98,000. And we also took great pains to match one-time revenue to one-time expenditures. And that is detailed in the five-year forecast. The budget strengthens the fund balance. So overall, fund balance for each year increases, which I don't think I've seen since I've worked here. So that's a positive step forward. Strategically aligns available resources to provide services to the community. So as I've mentioned, there's a number of reductions. But the budget isn't about just reductions, but how the city is going to provide services to the community. So we might have attrition where somebody's left. We've looked at those vacancies. So what's the best thing that we can do with that vacancy? Fully funding vehicle replacement and maintenance. And so that was one that if we had not, it was, we, we could not afford to do it, we could not afford not to do it. If we had not, if the budget did not fully fund vehicle replacement, the hole that was dug during the pandemic would just get larger. And so it was very positive to be able to fully fund that vehicle replacement fund. So the general fund, five-year forecast, as you see in the middle, the budget for 2025 and 2026. The net activity line, they mentioned, the structural is in the black, $14,000 to $27,000. And in 2026, a little over $98,000. Overall, change in fund balance, however, for 2025 is $640,000, which would increase our fund balance. And in 2026, it would increase again $176,000. So the ending fund balance, if it is shaded green, means that it is above the 16.67% minimum threshold for the fund balance. That's 16.67% of operating expenditures. The forecast shows that even though there'd be a negative change in fund balance in 2027, we would still be above the threshold. And then the yellow in the, that line from 2028 through 2031 means it is below that threshold but above zero. So there's still work to be done. Part of the budget process is mid-biennium review, where we will be working on the 2026 budget next year, updating it. Because we'll have more knowledge halfway through next year for 2026 than we do now. So the state requires that we review that budget and not just call it good and walk away. Other funds, there actually are other funds in the city besides the general fund. Development Fund actually is another one where we did have concerns, do have concerns about sustainability. We have a change in fund balance in 2025. It does decrease by $207,000 but ends on a positive note. Now, this does not have a minimum fund balance threshold. So at the end of 2025, we'll have $695,000, 2026, $369,000. However, this, the health of this fund is correlated with development projects in the city. So with those five projects mentioned in the last presentation, if those occur and there's development fees, then we do have hopes that this would rebound. The nature of this fund is the, kinda like a roller coaster, going up when the market's up and then going down as well. So hopefully that activity will benefit those out years where it's in red. The Marina Fund, the Marina Fund is healthy. The main financial issue, I think, with the Marina Fund in this forecast is the debt service. So currently, the Marina is paying debt service on the 2023 bonds and the 2018 bonds. The 2018 bonds mature in 2028. So that's why, as you look along that line for debt service, you see that it's like in '25 and '26, it's about 1.1 million, kinda stays there through '27 and '28, and then drops down to $858,000. So that's showing that that, those bonds mature and it does decrease. But it does mean that things will be a little bit tighter than usual until then. Fund balance, or net position as we'd say for the Marina, at 2025 would be about 1.75 million, going up to 2,000, 2 million in 2026. The net activity in 2025 is, you might see is 14.8 million in the red. That is due to the dock replacement project we expect to happen in fall of next year. That's why for capital improvements, you see a negative 14.692 million dollars. So that's just what's driving that net activity down into such a number that gives finance people heart attacks. No. No, that's, use of capital for that dock project, that's planned. And so, but that does show the decrease in fund balance because the bond proceeds the Marina is holding will be put into that project. So that's why there's a negative there. And finally, the Swim Fund. Swim Fund has net position in 2025 of a little over 27 million. Like to reiterate, that's net position. So that's, net position is assets less liability. So cash and all of the fixed assets like pipes, all of that stuff is considered assets less, you know, whatever debt the Service Water Management Fund has. So that would be 27.1 at the end of 2026, $26.5 million. And then, you know, it's a healthy net position all the way across the forecast. And that brings us to the suggested motion.
Thank you. So now it's time for the public comment portion of the meeting. We don't have anybody who signed up, so I'm just, before the intro, before I intro, and I'm just gonna ask, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak who wishes to speak? Second call, is there anyone who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? Third call. Is anybody who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? All right, council, do you have any questions at this time? Please, questions only. Councilmember Mahoney.
I just have one question on the Marina Fund. So you're saying basically, we have two bonds there, one for 2018 and one for 2023. Roughly, it looks like about $350,000, just shy of that, that you pay on the 2018 one.
That's correct, yeah.
Correct. So as far as the Marina development, possibly other docks and other things like that, or anything to do there, realistically, we're probably looking at 2029 before we can kinda hit the next phase of development or dock replacement, right? Because that's when we'd be open up to be able to fund that.
I'd agree with that. That, there's not much room for additional debt service in the Marina during those five years.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want to know.
Any more questions? Okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah. When you're talking about fully funding vehicle replacement, can you go into a little more detail? Because I, I bet there are people out there who are saying, hey, wait a minute, we don't have a lot of money. What are we doing buying a new car? Can you explain that concept a little bit more, please?
Yes, so the city has, as I mentioned, the, the city has various funds. And one of those funds is a fund where we set money aside to fund, to basically pay for the replacement of vehicles. So the city has a fleet of vehicles, largely made of, you know, I'd say police cars would be one of the larger pieces of that. Public Works has vehicles. However, you know, vehicles don't last forever. So, you know, and they have a useful life. And also, our insurance covers them for a period of time. So for instance, I believe with police cars, we can have them insured for 10 years. After 10 years, you know, there's no insurance and they tend to sometimes get in crashes. So that would be a liability for the city. So in order to smooth out basically our cash flow, you could approach it one of two ways. You can set aside money to replace those vehicles and be prepared for when they need to be replaced. And then maybe you replace five cars. Nothing happens over in the general fund and then it's paid for, you know, in that vehicle fund. Or you cannot plan for that. And then all of a sudden, you need to pay for three police cars. And then it comes out of the general fund and, and it, it's painful. Like in your personal finances, if you don't plan for something and something bad happens, it costs you a lot of money. So by setting aside this money, we're planning for when those cars are no longer useful and also protecting the general fund from these ups and downs of having to replace cars. And so it really, it just smoothes things out cash-wise. And then ensures that hopefully we have enough set aside for when those cars come due for replacement. That money is already set aside and it doesn't interrupt city services and whatnot. So does that help?
Yeah, but, I mean, during the pandemic and, and forward, we actually stopped replacing vehicles, didn't we, at some point?
We stopped. Yes, and what I would say is we stopped setting the money aside. That fund had money in it. So some purchases were made with that money that had already been set aside. But we stopped transferring money, at least for a couple of years, into that fund. So what we did was, we spent the money that was there. We didn't maintain the balances that were there. And so that, that, my reference, digging a hole, that's the hole that we dug. Because our reserves, if you want to call it that, for the new vehicles was getting smaller and we weren't making a transfer from the funds that are using those cars to replenish that funding so that we could replace, you know, the other cars that, when they come up, if that makes sense, so.
So to complete the analogy, this means we're gonna stop digging?
Correct. We filled the hole. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I didn't think I had too, any questions. But so regarding the Vehicle Replacement Fund, is that strictly limited to vehicles? Or, I'm sorry, you're the Jeopardy answer person, I'm so, but is it strictly limited to vehicles? Because I, I think to myself that there are all kinds of little gizmos and stuff that are part of kitting out a lot of these things.
Well, it's, actually, the name of the fund is the Equipment Replacement Fund. So I, off the top of my head, we do maintain a schedule of everything that's in there. I think that.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to get.
It's mostly vehicles, I'll put it that way. So maybe there's a trailer, something like that, but mostly vehicles.
There is some equipment in there, but that's something that's on my list next year to look at because we should be actually certain IT.
No, I, I, thank you, because like the cops, they have this kit that they, you know, want to be able to carry around and.
They've got a lifeline.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I didn't want you to phone a friend, mate. I, I, please, that, that's, that's more than, I mean, unless you have something.
Well, Councilmember Harris, I'll just give some set examples. Like we can have a vehicle that's a backhoe and we might have an, or a tractor, or we might have an arm. So it's major, parts of construction equipment are more than just the vehicle itself. So within Public Works, it is, it is the vehicles. It is the vehicles and the auxiliary equipment. And when you get to police, it's majority is vehicles, but also includes the radios in the cars and those types of things.
Yeah, okay, brilliant, okay. And so my other thing, which again, I don't want to, but it's been a long time since like the Economic Development or Committee is. But with the Marina, is there some piece of paper somewhere that just talks about the like long-term current expected cost of the seawall work and, you know, all of that other jazz going out 20 years? I'm sorry, I'm being.
Sounds like a harbor master question.
No, 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 I'm just, because I'm, I'm just, because it's a real thing, just, you know, that, that other stuff. And so I'm just asking that at some point, you know, in the near future, that we sort of update that number.
Yeah, I think that there is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
I think that there, for dock replacement, there are different phases to that project. I think that does include that, but probably in light of our inflation, probably would need to be updated.
All right, any other questions? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I move to pass draft ordinance number 24, Act 089, establishing the 2025 slash 2026 biennial budget for the fiscal years ending December 31st, 2025 and December 31st, 2026.
I have a second, Councilmember Nutting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I'll take Deputy Mayor Steinmetz first and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I, I really want to give out a lot of compliments. I think this is really a great job in, I mean, there was obviously a pretty good baseline when the new city manager arrived. But I think that she set the tone because she heard what the community had to say and she heard what the council that hired her had to say, which is we gotta get ahold of our finances and we've gotta do some realistic budget. And, you know, it's, it's gotta come from the top of the city and I really, really appreciate the tone that was set. The desire to just rip off the Band-Aid and get it done, it's gonna be some lean years, I understand that. But I think that, Jeff, I think you had done a lot of, laid a lot of groundwork over the last few years to get the data available to, both to us and to the city manager and have that available. So, and then, you know, all of the department heads obviously really sat down and figured out what they could do without. And, you know, those are hard, hard decisions. And thus, they don't feel good, but I want you to know you're appreciated.
Good job. Thank you. I intend to vote for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Motsui.
I would echo almost everything that Deputy Mayor Steinman said. I'll reserve some, not ditto the whole thing. But I hope that this type of presentation and these type of materials that are now available online go a long way to reassuring folks in the public who are afraid that going to a biennial budget would need less information. And I think that we're just smacking people with even more information and it really makes a difference in terms of folks being able to understand the numbers, see the problems that we're trying to tackle and see some of the successes as well. So thank you so much for all the time that you've done, put into preparing this budget about three or four times. And it's obviously been a tremendous amount of work to, to get us to this place, so thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
One name we didn't mention tonight is our city attorney, Tim George. Tim George led a lot of the changes, the cuts, even before our city manager came on. And his work here need to be recognized. I know he worked with the team a lot, but he in particular did a lot of the legwork and he did an excellent job in his year as interim city manager as well. So I want to say thank you on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I would echo compliments all round, Tim George. It's, and, and Ms. Cafrey, just thinking about all the transitions I can think of of city manager. This, you were being thrown into the deep end, all the other transitions of which I'm aware. Yeah, this is, yeah, it's unbelievable and well done. My general tone is that I am, you know, the notion of this time will be different. As horrible as this may seem, this is the beginning. And we've been through this any number of times. As to the notion of one-time money versus, you know what? It's like a floor wax, a food topping, whatever people, terminology people want to say. If we want to call pipes in the ground that are decaying assets, you know, great. I will just note and make two notes. I do not call the Marina Fund as healthy as some because all the other Marinas in the area are special purpose districts. Okay, and it's just, you know, if we really had the plan, we're kind of ignoring the fact that we've got this ginormous program out into the future that we have absolutely no idea what we're going to do. So, I mean, it's, it's great that it's good for now. But I don't think we're basically making the future people pay for a lot of stuff from past mistakes. And I'll just close by noting one other thing. The only time we ever got to 1% of general fund for human services was during a once-in-a-century pandemic. I think most of the public would feel that if you just asked them just out of the blue, well, you know, do you spend 1% of your budget on human services? And they would, of course, they would think yes. So the fact that we have never been able to get to even that number should tell people the delta between what we think we expect in terms of amenities and what the public thinks we can afford and what we actually can afford. In short, we, our eyes have been bigger than our stomach. And, and we want to be, we, you know, I'm, I am rooting for the new team. But I'm also wary of the five-to-seven-year thing that the former finance director spoke about so many years ago. Thank you. I will be supporting this with bells on.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it was Deputy Mayor Steinmetz who used the analogy of, you know, ripping the bandage off. Well, you know, in this case, you know, we're pouring a little bit of salt into it, into the wound. But the thing is, salt has purifying quality. And I think that we've been on this trajectory for 25 years, 24, 25 years. And it's time to, to, you know, tack, tack differently and to, you know, be a little bit more conservative in what we're doing and a little bit more thoughtful. And again, I want to express my gratitude for the, the input and insight that we've received from the new city manager. The staff obviously did a lot of work to bring things around. But her added insight has got us to the point where I'm hopeful, very hopeful for the future. I think we're, we're plotting a course that we can somehow reach sustainability. So I too will be supporting the budget. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion, for discussion here? Okay, Cory.
This is, this is a real question. Have you scheduled time off after this meeting? No, that's a serious question.
I may or may not have said to the city attorney as we sat down, I'm really ready for a month of no meetings, even though I've only been here seven weeks. I look forward to the holidays. But actually, I am elated to hear that this is going to be, hopefully, really strong support on the budget. I heard your comments on the one-time revenue. And I'm like taking them to heart, like noted. But wow, what a vote of confidence and a positive sign for our staff to hear this. So thank you so much. And yes, I will take some time off.
That's the correct answer. Thank you.
Okay, well, just a little bit tongue-in-cheek maybe. But, and I appreciate a council member Harris's comments about human services. We did support, we did, you know, the reason we were able to do that was ARPA funding, that Rescue Plan Act, right? And really, in a sense, the entire budget is human services. I mean, everything goes into serving, in one way or not, our citizens, helping them not to get in accidents and helping them get around and keeping them safe. So, but yeah, we made some very difficult decisions. And I, here again, compliments around, this was not comfortable. And stat, in the middle of staff transitions, inflation and unseen carryforwards from previous years, courageous decisions responding to challenges. And in some of that is not just this budget here, but scheduling serious discussions for especially Q1 and Q2 and during our committees. And here at the dais, we're going to be talking about some of these glaring things and, and moving forward, address, addressing longer-term issues. And revenue streams, to Councilmember Oxiger's constant comment, is going to be a top priority planned discussion. Where, are we going to break, we can, we're going to brainstorm about sustainable revenue streams. So I would like to now take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Woo-hoo, yes. Are you going to dance? Seven, zero. Thank you. This is lovely. Yeah. Very great. Oh, and kudos to all of you guys sitting out there and everybody watching that helped with this. Okay, back to new business. New business item number two, the Des Moines Marina Steps Project. The purpose of this item is to seek concurrence of the council in rejecting the bid for the Marina Steps Project. We have a staff presentation from Director Mike Sliven.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. The City of Des Moines Marina Steps Project was advertised for bids on October 9, 2024 in accordance with state law in the Washington State Department of Transportation Local Agency Guidelines Manual, the requirements for competitive bidding for Public Works contracts. On November 20 of 2024, bids were opened with only two responsive bids being received. The engineer's estimate for the construction contract was 8.167 million. And the two bids received were from Active Construction, Inc. at 11.741 million and A1 Landscaping and Construction at 12.512 million. Active Construction's low bid was approximately 44% or the engineer's estimate. Based upon the pricing of the bids, the Public Works Department recommends the rejection of all bids due to lack of funds to accomplish the work as designed. Staff is currently evaluating future options for the project, including the possibility of rebidding after a value engineering effort. We are scheduled to return to the council for discussion of options on the January 9, 2025 meeting to receive further impact and direction from the council. I have here for any questions you may have.
Could you clarify if we've got questions or input between now and that briefing?
Yes.
Yes, and send them to city manager. Okay, any questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yep, Mr. Sliven, what went wrong? It just, this is two projects now that have gone out to bid and have come in just substantially higher than expected. You know, fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on you. What's going on here?
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, I think it's a combination of things in the marketplace with construction right now. The, what we're seeing from federal monies flowing into construction, and specifically in this area, we have sound transit. You have washed dock construction projects. There's a very dense amount of projects going on and few contractors with availability and a lot of, lot of less tradespeople. It's really pushing the inflation up on the jobs. And the design bid tabs are not keeping up with that with our consultants that are doing the designs. This project is also a, comparing the Redondo Project and the Steps Project is also a little bit different. When you look at the Redondo Project, a lot of that had to do with the environmental requirements and permitings and restrictions we had. This was much more uncertainty of designs, a difficult location. It's in a combined area. There's risk to contractors with regards to compaction in the condos and some of those things. And so those are all different kinds of things that are happening right now in the construction world with these. Yeah, it was tough. We also had some bidders that did not bid. We heard through, there's a, there's a document that's attached in the, in the packet for you that talks about some reasons why the bids came in high. One of those reasons was we had 21 bidders show up at the pre-bid. And so we were looking, we were pretty confident. But some of those bidders who we would have anticipated being lower didn't bid because they thought there was too much competition. Or even though they showed up for the bid reading, they didn't, and that pre-con construction meeting, they decided not to bid because they thought there was too many of the bigger players there. So it was just a really awkward timing and, and construction in the market. So, or timing in the market also. So we're going to go take, go back to take a look and see what it's going to cost to do a value engineering effort and see, and see what's going on with that. And maybe there's some changes we can make to the project to help bring the project costs down. We don't know if we're going to be able to get the full way there, given what the contract costs are right now. But we're going to take a solid look at it. And we'll be back on the ninth to report.
I'm sorry, didn't, I wasn't watching who was first and second. So I'll, okay, Councilmember Grace Motzui and then Councilmember Netting.
Thank you. Yeah, going off of what you just said about the specialty pricing, looks like it's the, one of the number one reasons, or if not the number one reason, why there were higher costs. And that looks like quite a bit had to do with our design and our requirements for our design. And so if we were to scale back or decrease the amount of special concrete finishes and unique features that are not easily sourced, could that possibly increase the number of bids and make it less of a specialty kind of, really specialized and unique kind of bidder that needs to come in and say, yes, I can do these types of finishes. Yes, I can accomplish this design. And I'm also imagining that if you have rare materials or hard-to-source materials, that it might take longer to procure them. So it could impact your timeline as well. So I'm looking for when redesign or some of that might come back to council or if that's something that will be handled internally at Public Works.
So, Councilmember, on, on the ninth, we'll come back with some of the ideas that we, we've already started brainstorming with our, with our design engineers. We won't have complete answers, but we've already identified a lot of what you just said in there. And I think what it'll come down to if moving the project forward is, is at what point, you know, at what point do we remove so much of the special that we were designing? When we went into this project with, with the community, we were, we were designing a high-end placemaking-type event, space. And at some point, we, we're going to have to discuss those and the council's going to have to make the decisions is what is there? You know, is, is there enough for what we wanted to accomplish to bring people to the Marina and to make a space like that? Or is it not? And can we afford what we were hoping to get? And so those are different things we have to do.
Mike, can you also talk about that there's a cost to value engineering?
Yes, yes.
Do we actually want to do some research on that? So on the ninth, you're presented with knowing that there is a cost to look at all that. So we just want everybody informed. Can you share?
Absolutely. So I, we spoke with, we spoke with the engineering teams today. And we're getting estimates somewhere between like 75 and 100,000 for the redesign effort for the value engineering piece. We're talking with Geotechnical, we're talking with some other things. There's also some risk stuff we're talking about with regards to the condos and things like that with noise risk and things that some of the contractors put in there. So those are all things we're looking forward to. And when we come back on the ninth, depending upon the direction we get, we will show up with, with, with the ability to vote on that, to extend that contract, to begin in-depth the value engineering and pricing.
Councilmember Netting.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So when we go out for an RFP, do we go out for, do we put it on like BXWA or do we get a list from?
Yes, that's exactly what we did.
BXWA and do we get a list from KPFF of contractors too that we send out the RFP to?
Yes, we, so when we, when we sent out the bids, the bids went out on just like a lag manual requirement. And so they hit that. And then that's where the contractors came in to get the plans and do all of that. So that's the process we file.
And then, so when, when we open the bids, we go for the apparent little bidder?
Correct.
Right, is, is what? We don't, we don't have a process where we issue points for, okay, it's apparent little bidder, but they've done work in the city before and, and do a point system like other cities do?
We do not here, we do not do that here in Des Moines.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mike, because we transferred 1.3 million in ARPA funds to the general fund, so those monies are now, I assume, no longer available for the Steps Project, are we now starting with a much smaller pool of money that, to bring something into, into, you know, feasibility?
So that's, Jeff kind of glanced on this in, in one of his presentations this morning about the bond funds or this, this evening with the bond funds. And the bond funds can be moved among the projects listed and other capital projects within the approved capital improvement plan as the council desires. So one of those things is, we've been delayed on the Redondo. And if we're able to get this bid in time on the Redondo Pier, we were able to move the, this is kind of the stuff we want to discuss on the ninth, so I'm probably getting ahead of myself here. But the, we were able to move the grant monies we had in Redondo Pier into the restroom portion of the project and turn it into two phases and move the state money there. So the only thing left that we have in the Redondo Project now is, is the pier itself. And there's 1.8 million dollars of bond money in the pier. But by the time the pier is redesigned and we get additional, and get the additional monies we need, that money could be available. And we could make up the 1.8 million dollar in the Redondo Pier through other funding sources. Because we're going to, by the time we get it redesigned and get it re-permitted, we probably won't be to the 26th year. So we're balancing all these different things out now to bring you all the options so that we can get direction on the projects you want us to focus on.
So then, before proceeding any further, this is all going to come back to the council?
Absolutely, yeah.
Basically, we're, we're at square one again?
Correct. Other than we have two designs. We have two designs and now, now we're working on how do we fund them and what are the priorities within these designs?
Okay, but I mean, the approval process is we're back to square one.
Right, we're going to have to rebid the projects. And we're going to need your permission to do that, correct?
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion before the, any more, excuse me, any more questions before the motion? Okay, do I have a motion? Councilmember Netting.
I move to reject bids received for the Des Moines Marina Steps Project.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Any discussion? All right, I think I've got some notes here. We covered that all. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's a seven, zero. Thank you very much.
All right, next up in new business is human services advisory funding. This item is, the purpose of this item is to request council approval of the 2025-2026 Human Services Funding Recommendations. And for our staff presentation, we have Executive Admin Analyst Rochelle Kaiten. Thanks, Rochelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Good to be before you again. As you remember, I was here late October with a full presentation. And as promised, we're here again with the full recommendation of the Human Service Advisory Committee. So we cleaned it up and put it on a nice piece of paper for you. So the one thing that I believe does bear repeating is how the committee. So, the one thing that I believe does bear repeating is how the committee comes to these decisions. When reviewing the applications, the obvious things are reviewing the criteria of the nonprofit, ensuring that they are 501(c)(3) nonprofit, ensuring that the work that they're wanting to do, or they do, meets the needs of our community, and then also to ensure that they're in close proximity to our city. We received about 71 applications, some of those are from other cities far away, and it just wouldn't make sense to fund them. So, the 19 organizations that we did choose and are recommending for funding, most of these organizations, we all have established relationships with these organizations, we have funded them previously, they do incredible work, they're effective in our community, and that is what we have before you. The committee also considers the five funding priorities for each organization. What we look for is if they provide secure, affordable housing and food adequate to meet the needs of our community. So those are organizations like our food bank, Backpack Brigade, and then also, the second one is safe from violence within their families, neighborhoods, and communities. So those are domestic violence services, and so on. Be healthy physically and mentally. That is things like Health Point, their mental health services, clinics such as that. And then the fourth is education and job skills that lead to employment and living wage jobs. We have job training programs, they do great work. And then the last one is early childhood education and youth success, all very important in a community. So with that, those are the funding recommendations that we have before you. Thank you.
Questions before the motion? All right, do I have a motion? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, I need to approve the 2025-26 Human Services Funding Recommendations and operate the signature through signed contracts with the nonprofit.
Second, looks like Councilmember Nettie, Councilmember Nettie has a second, thank you very much, discussion? First, Councilmember Oxiger, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I really want to congratulate the committee and Rochelle for the, the amount of work that went into this. As we were debating the budget, it was all over the place as to how much money was going to be available, but then, that also, that also caused the group to go into a deep dive into seeing, you know, what monies might be duplicative, which, you know, that we're not particularly, you know, serving the needs that we were, we were trying to direct the money to. I just want to say, this, this is an example of when, you know, we've got an advisory group here that just went the extra mile to try and bring this into, into line, and I'm eternally, eternally grateful for the amount of work you've done. So, I recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. And in my tenure at this, the, you know, the, everyone I've watched on the Human Services Advisory Committee, they just, they, they knock it out of the park in terms of research and diligence and expertise, and, and I, and I bleed over that 1%. I just, you have no idea how insufficient this money is to the need, and I am so sorry, it, it is my, I don't know what, but I, we gotta get more funding structurally to be able to fulfill those commitments, and I'll just close with one thing, because everything is about the airport. The Port of Seattle every year has any number of grant programs that go unfulfilled because there are simply not enough nonprofits that even apply for various very worthy programs. It is becoming more and more challenging to stand up a nonprofit and to get people organized, and if you have a system that is based upon the onerous requirements of setting up a 501(c)(3) and so forth, it sets the bar too high, even when the agency attempts to provide the funding. Somehow, the mechanism to get the money that's out there to the people that need it has to be fundamentally rethought. It just shouldn't be this much work, and, but, in, I, I am sorry to sound so perpetually cranky, but it's only because I bleed over that 1%. But, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
One last bit of praise, and thank you very much for the presentation. This is one of those things that, in the tough and sometimes dark seeming discussions around budget, becomes one of the things that is a beacon of light for us to say that we do some good, and we fund direct services that need to happen in order to support our community. And I want to say thank you to all of those on staff and here at the council to preserve this funding, even though it is very tough times for us. But it is a priority, and I believe that we are all enriched when we make sure that we reach out and help others. So again, thank you very much, and I, I want to recognize that we definitely had tough choices, but this is one that I'm very happy to see persist into '25 and '26.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I also want to compliment you and, and, and the committee on really, you know, we dealt you a tough hand, but I think that, you know, you came up with some really good ones. And, you know, not to belabor the point, but, you know, all of these are, I presume, 501(c)(3)'s, which means anybody out there in the community can make a donation. And tis the season, the season of giving. So, this is a good list. These are, these are vetted, quality deliverables, and so if anybody out there wants to make a donation on behalf of themselves, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? So, I wanted to say thank you as well, I served on that committee the same way that Councilmember Oxiger does. Hate to put you on the spot, can you, can you tell us the names of the, of our volunteers who serve on?
Say that again?
The names of the volunteers that serve on that committee?
Diane Hoyer, Lynn Cashman, Corinne Ketchmark, and Mary Guyverston.
Amazing group of volunteers.
Yes, absolutely. They all, their backgrounds are all in social work, human services, public education. I would say, and I joked with them often, that this was one of my favorite meetings because, and mostly I was quiet, because they, they have so much to share and so much to say, so it's, it was an incredible group of, of folks. And as always, we welcome any community member to please, if they have interest, if they have the time, though there's really never any of the time, but if they have the interest, we would love it if they would apply to be on that committee.
It's a fabulous way to serve the community, so, thank you. So without further ado, all in favor of passing this, raise your right hand, it's a seven zero, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, great work, thank you Rochelle. All right. So the next item on the agenda is we're moving into new agenda items for consideration. So this is, the time for this, this is a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda. It's, these items would not, have also not been previously before the council, it's not a time for council action or questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business, business items to the city manager at any time. So do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? All right, moving forward, scooting onto the end here, I can't, I just have to say, I can't believe it, I really didn't think that we would be able to get through all of these things, my compliments to my team here, or our team, us as a team. So, yes.
Sorry, you and I had a discussion earlier that there was something that you might, not on a new agenda, but...
That's right, I did not think that we would have time for that, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll bring that up right now, thank you very much. So I have a, a couple of ideas and proposal that I would like to bring to the economic develop, well, bring to the council, probably most likely through the Economic Development Committee, in regard to fee appropriation and some, some frontage treatments that are a little more sustainable than flowers, up and down the main drag, and maybe a couple of the places in town. So I wanted to ask permission, if you with a head nod, to give that presentation to the Economic Development Committee, and if the, if the chair would agree, and I've got some nods.
If, if there's three councilmembers that, and as the chair, I would accept that.
All right. January, I think.
January.
Okay, great, we'll put that on the agenda, thank you so much, appreciate that. Any, anything else here on this item? Okay, so then moving on to councilmember reports, we'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Well, let's see here, yesterday I attended the last meeting of the King County Regional Emergency Management Committee, and it's an interesting thing, I think people often hear about, we had this earthquake in 2001, and they confuse that with this major plate quake that comes every 300, 200 years, and, but the, but the plate that actually caused that earthquake actually has an event about every 50, 30 to 50 years on average historically, at that same level of severity. And so the discussion was how to give people a 20-second alert for safety, and what has been absolutely confounding is that there is an alert system, but almost none of the special purpose districts, agencies share the software program that provides that simultaneous thing. We have a voluntary program called Code RED that, you know, is supposed to be emergency alert, but not, even that is not hooked into the program. And so the discussion was, how do you get all of the myriad special purpose districts, regional agencies, fire, hospitals, and so forth, just plumb to that software that exists to give everyone that 20 seconds to get to safety? And, but it's very clear that the averages, that there is going to be an Esqali level event within the next 25, 30 years. And, you know, the problem is, is that on, in local government, everything is, you know, two weeks, there's a budget, there's always something more important, but at some point, somehow, I sure wish we could get that software hooked up, because, yeah. So, and I would just, again, I want to thank our new city manager, everybody, it's just, yeah, it's just great, great work, and I, the thing with the airport is, it is the, it is the path we should have taken back in 1996, and we, that we did not, and this year is the year, it is about revenue and not flight paths. It is about the airport knowing that there are tens of thousands of gallons of PFAS on the airport plateau, that they are completely, you know, aware of, and, but is not part of the discussion. It is about any number of things regarding the environment and our community impacts, public safety, economic development, that should have been discussed during the third runway, but we were so focused on just making the planes go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I also did not think we would have any time for this. So, all I'm gonna say is it was a hell of a year, and whatever holiday you celebrate over the next couple of weeks, I wish you the happiest of holidays, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I'm gonna say basically the same thing, I hope you have a fabulous new year, and we have a chance here to do a quick recess, and, and we won't reconvene again until the next year in January of 2025. It's a time for reflection, and I hope that we, and you all listening, have that opportunity to get some rest, spend some time with your families if that's important to you, and celebrate some holidays if that's something that you do as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettie.
I, I don't have any committee reports or anything, but I, I do want to echo what my colleagues said, I, I do appreciate the staff and everything that's gone into this year, it's been a rough year, it's been a challenging year, not a rough year, it's been a challenging year, and we've come up with creative solutions, and so that's a positive thing, and we've worked as a team. I want to thank my colleagues for putting in the time as well, they've done a great job, and I want to thank the, our, our first responders and our police department for always being there for us, and, and, yeah, have a happy holiday season, and look forward to doing the work with all of you again next year, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, at the risk of being repetitive, you know, it's, it has been a lot of work, and I think, you know, a new outlook and everything, and so, the new year coming up is, we look forward, we do our resolutions and everything, and we're, you know, really gung ho on, you know, the possibilities for the new year, and I think that we have set ourselves up well. New staff onboard, the work of the staff to, to, you know, bring things more into line, and I have great hopes for the new year. I think that, you know, we've got, we're moving forward, we're in the right direction. And so everybody, happy holidays, and Catherine, get some rest.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
You know, I, I kind of want to put a little perspective on it, but I'll be short. I've done too much stuff since the last time we did these to try to recount it all, so I'm not gonna try to tell you all the things that I've been doing, but, you know, this has been a year of ups and downs, and, you know, we started a transition about this time last year, and it has moved forward and now culminated in a new administration, and I think that we've ended up really headed in the right direction, very much upward, and I think that's a really good thing. You know, this is the end of my third year on the council, and sometimes it seems like a lot longer than that, just the way that we have to deal with it, but, you know, those first couple of years are just kind of learning, how does this place operate? So, you know, I've really been pleasantly surprised where we're at right now. I think we have a much better budget, I think we have a very strong staff, I think we have great leadership that has come onboard, I think the council has done a much better job this year of talking things through, in, in a much more, in a better dialogue than we have in the past, and I think that has, you know, kept, kept the temperature down. And I think that has, you know, kept the temperature down a little bit, which is something that I think everybody really wanted. And I also think that can, that in and of itself has contributed to something as amazing as having a budget meeting, and it looks like we're going to finish, you know, before 8:30, depending upon how long the mayor talks. No pressure, though. But I want to wish everybody, you know, very happy holidays, whoever you celebrate. Have a great new year, and we will see you in January. Thank you.
Well, I brought a book, so settle down. Settle down, have your tea, you know. Well, I also didn't expect to be able to make some comments, but I'll say this. I took a fantastic trip a week ago to join my kids. One of my kids celebrated their wedding in Japan because he married a lovely young Japanese woman, who I adore. And speaking to a young man who, her brother, who's now part of my family, Kenshiro, and I said, I was asking him about the, you know, Japan and America. He kind of, he wants to come to America. And I'm like, this is so clean, this is so orderly, this is amazing here, Kenshiro. Why do you want to come to the U.S.? And he talked for a long time about economic mobility and cultural mobility here in the U.S. That you are not born into a class that cannot be changed for yourself. And it made me so, listening to him, even, they're in upper-middle class, even in Japan. He's very comfortable, but he still wants to come here. I am so thankful for that freedom we live inside of, and it's what he longs for. And I get to live it in every day. And it's made me want to continue to self-examine, right? Am I, I don't want to use my freedom in vain, and so personally or in this office, right? So I want to know that I've given it all I have, and so far, so good. I really have. And I see that among my colleagues. I see that in the staff here, sitting in this room. I see that in some of our community members. It's fabulous. And I feel like it's such a privilege to serve here and serve amongst these people in this room and out in the community. So I am looking forward to the holidays of next year. I hope you all enjoy your holidays and that you're able to gather and love and laugh. And as I love to say, Merry Christmas. And so this concludes our meeting for this evening. The next meeting date will be January 9th, 2025. It will be a city council business meeting. Please remember to pick up after yourself, which I think I forgot last time. And on your way out, and Councilmember Harris, would you like to take the motion?
Sure thing. I move to adjourn the 12th December, 2024 City Council Meeting of Des Moines.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Nutting, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like we have a seven-zero. We're adjourned.